In accordance with the provisions of the public meeting, here on 1974. C-231 as one on the 2006. C-72, the other part of education has been reminded at the notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on January 8, 2021 via email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the administration building bulletin boards, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January 8, 2021. The Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive progressive in progressive education where everyone possesses the skill and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Roll call, please, Mr. Hastings.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Alvez Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Breach, Ms. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Grillo. Mr. Lotaraca.
Here.
Mr. Remy. Mr. Saunders. Ms. Lozinski.
Here.
And that's him.
Here. May I be stand for flag? Okay, at this time, we'll do the committee reports. Let's start with Mr. Lotaraca.
Thank you. Finance Committee, you'll see on the agenda tonight, requesting approval to go out to bid for new energy service company. Keep in mind, some of the projects that we initially thought would be under this, we'd work with this escale on, are now being covered with federal funds where we're doing the HVAC. So we'll kind of work those in as we go. But we're still going to go ahead and competitively bid for a new company. The comprehensive annual financial report, there has been an extension. We're on track, but the audit is coming late this month. And we expect to have the audit completed closer to the original date of December, even though there's been an extension to early February. You'll also see on tonight's agenda, request for approval of the APA SA collective bargaining agreement. We had approved it as the negotiating committee. We're waiting for approval from the membership. That's been done, and you'll see it on the agenda tonight. We've got some bids with regard to concrete repair work at the Asbury Park High School stadium. We've gone back to the contractor because there were some inconsistencies with regard to costs associated with a power supply and scaffolding. We're not sure exactly what they were thinking there. But Mr. Hastings is going back and requesting more information with regard to how the estimate with regard to those two components compared to the actual manpower for the concrete work itself was put together. Architect and federal procurement. We will be expending federal grant funds as we've talked about, and again, a lot, much of that HVAC projects over the course of the next year. In order to comply then with our federal procurement guidelines, we're going to issue NRFP for architectural services. That's kind of a necessary step in order to obtain federal dollars that we do it. We weren't necessarily in a cycle where we were looking for changing architectural services, but it's a requirement because of the federal dollars. And then a few of you have been emailing me as if you're looking at various sources of information. There are some other grants out there. One was the Stabilization Aid Education Rescue Grant. We discussed it. Didn't think we necessarily wanted to apply at this time because you have to show you're suffering an operational deficiency this year and to plug that operational deficiency. We don't, we don't really have that to try to allege that you do raises other types of issues. And then Dr. Adams also pointed out, not necessarily on tonight's agenda, but in the future, there's going to be, you'll see, we haven't had consistency, a review of confidential secretaries in the administrative assistant area has not been consistent. The review has shown certain individuals are at that level, but not assigned to that level, particularly in light of those that have been assigned to that level. So please be aware, you're going to be seeing something along those lines. My experience has been, over the years, an individual perhaps makes a request, and over time, there's just, some have requested, some have not, as facts have changed. The qualifications and at what level don't keep up with the changing facts. So we do need to get that consistent over time. And that is finance.
Are there any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Lotaraca. Ms. Cook?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Okay, so recommended board approval for the team of CTE Engineering Academy students and Mr. Kevin Nichols to work in collaboration with the Dill Lake Commissions on the Water Quality and Engineering Project, beginning September 2021 to October 2021, weather permitting. There is no cost to the district. Also looking for approval for MOU agreement between Asbury Park High School and Fairleigh Dickinson University for the Law and Public Safety CTE Academy. Twenty-six students taking three credit courses at eight hundred and one dollars per student. Total cost, not TICC, twenty-one thousand. The approval for the amount between Conscious Youth Development and Services Kids and Asbury Park High Schools for response, sorry, for response to restorative practices, school-based division program. In a 2021, 2020 year school year, with two one-year renewal options, contingent on a satisfactory program performance and availability of the grant funds agreement. Response, respond with restorative practices program will address minor school-based incidents in Asbury Park High School, using restorative practices like restorative responsive circles and committee conferences to help parties, offering students and victims to come to agreement on appropriate consequences response. So restorative practices address the underlying issues targeting delinquent behavior by empowering students to resolve their own conflict while providing a voice for victims to be heard. The kids staff will support the needs of the high school three days per week, providing restorative practice to youth and detention and school suspension along with restorative wellness programs to the school's community. The program is to be funded by the grant obtained by kids. There is no cost to the district. Lastly, for approval to develop and submit the application for the elementary and secondary school emergency funds, SRT three funds grant. The purpose of the SRT three funds is to support the local educational agencies to prepare for a response to the impact of COVID-19 on educators, students, and families. allowable uses include all possible expenditures under SRT one and SRT two. The amount on the grant is fifty million, six hundred and fifty, thousand, three hundred and fifty. The project period is March 11, 2021 through September 30, 2024. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Are there any questions or statements? So Lozinski, would you like to do athletics?
The athletics committee has just been meeting on our homecoming, and because the weather is going to be bad tomorrow, tonight, the students would not have been able to get their floats together. So it'll be held, a parade will be held at another date, and therefore, that part of the homecoming will be canceled. The rest of it is still going on, the game, the alumni tent, et cetera, as we've done in the past.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Hastings, would you like to do buildings and grounds, please?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. At buildings and grounds, we discussed facility use requests and in keeping with the policy, we did have interest expressed. However, paperwork had not been submitted in time for this meeting. So we do have things, some things out there, but they're not on this agenda. We talked about the reopening and building inspections. We continue to maintain compliance with the COVID guidelines that we've been practicing for the past eighteen months in terms of cleaning and three-phase cleaning steps. We also have the fire inspector out to all buildings and conduct their inspection. And we're working on a couple of small items that need to be corrected in terms of being in compliance with those. And those were things like deliveries that had been made and the pallets needing to be cleared out of the hallways, those sorts of smaller items. As Mr. Lotaraca mentioned, we also discussed the stadium and the sort of multi-phase approach to making repairs to the stadium over several budgets, so we don't have to absorb the cost in any one budget. We did talk about, again, the architect and federal procurement compliance. And then the final thing we discussed was field access for the public, and in particular, the high school track. Right now, we have open access to all fields. Excluded right now is the playground here at Bradley that closes after dark, as well as the playground over at Barak. And the stadium is also closed off. So the committee discussed access to the track for the public and some of the pros and cons we've had. And they wanted to bring it up here so the fuller board could voice any comments or concerns or send those in perhaps to Mr. Remy, the chair, so that we could review those in committee.
Are there any questions or comments?
With regard to the track, that was going to talk. Currently, we keep the track closed all the time, correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Do we have security cameras set up there?
We do not.
Hang on one moment. To the extent that we're going to discuss security, security measures, camera placement, or anything like that, we should not be doing that here in public.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry.
Maybe something for an executive session then as we get into what we like to. So that's what I think.
And I will reserve my comment for executive session. Thank you.
I'll go on record saying that I don't agree with, for the track itself and the turf and the fact that we're doing so much construction at the stadium right now, I would, I would be opposed to opening the track up to the public right this, right this meeting. Yes.
May I say that also? Because that's what I was going to say. I thought I had to reserve it for executive session.
No, the only thing I didn't want discussed out here, that we shouldn't discuss out here, is actual security measures.
Okay.
And camera placement, that's all. Anything else is fair to me for this discussion.
Well, then, no, I'm in, I'm against opening it up to the public at this time. Are there any additional comments or questions? Okay. Mr. Grillo, do you have anything for policy?
So with policy, thank you, Madam President. So with policy, the committee briefly discussed the latest Strauss-Sesmey alert, and this will be the second reading of these policies. All the policies are mandatory. We do have, I see, some COVID-19 policy guide updates. One which is the school employee vaccination requirements, which is mandated. Basically says that the board shall adopt and maintain a policy that requires all covered workers to either provide adequate proof that they've been fully vaccinated or submit to COVID-19 testing at a minimum of one to two times each week. And that requirement takes effect October 18th, at which time any covered workers that have not provided adequate proof to the school district that they are fully vaccinated, they must submit to that testing on an ongoing basis until they're fully vaccinated. But, and that's about it? There is, actually, I'm sorry, there is one other thing that we did speak about, which was about technology devices to students, right? So a number of Chromebooks and laptops are being reported as damaged, whether it's like a shattered screen or they're lost. And we had a discussion about what would be the appropriate measures to take to replace these devices if we're going to be charging parents for those broken or lost laptops, what, you know, what is, what would be considered an undue burden? Or, you know, how we will work that out?
Are there any comments and/or questions?
Madam President, may I say something? First of all, I am not about Mr. Grillo's policy, but I just want to say on behalf of the board, and I'm sure everyone else here, we are certainly glad to see you. And so we welcome you back, welcome home. And I just want to applaud you. And we love you.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, I'm going to open the floor up to public participation. Please come to the mic, state your name, your address, and what you want to speak about.
Hello, my name is Mrs. LaShawn Anderson-Bry. I'm here on behalf of my daughter, Janasia Bry. I came to the last meeting because my daughter is supposed to be on home instruction. And I feel as though that I keep getting around, and every time I go to speak to someone, it's the pandemic. But I feel as though you all knew the school was going to be open, you wanted the school to be open. My daughter's on home instruction. I gave the letter. She is a pupil that you are receiving funding for, so she needs to get her adequate work so that she can stay with the class that she's in. As far as you speaking about Chromebooks, when my daughter received her Chromebook, it was already I'm pretty sure that you all should have, you know, over to the side what you have to do for the children that are going to be home instruction or whatever. My daughter's not the only one. I'm pretty sure that's not attending school, but she has a legitimate reason. She had a doctor's letter. But every time I turn around, it's, they're pushing me off, and it's the pandemic. But I'm pretty sure they're not saying that when you go to endorse your check and sign it, or when you're getting these fundings for the children. My daughter deserves the proper education so that she can move on. And that's all I have to say. I'm worried about my daughter. I'm not worried about any sports. I'm not worried about the track. I'm not worried about anything but my daughter's education. Thank you.
Sheila Brazil, 1200 Jingle Street. Is this for anything, or can I do this going on record, or can I wait to the regular meeting? You know, I didn't, I ain't did so long.
Either one you want to do. You can do it now or you can do it.
So both of them going on record? Or just?
They're both part of the, both part of the record, and we have an open session in both meetings.
Because, you know, I ain't did, I ain't did this in so long, so it's like, okay. Well, I'll probably do something now, and then I I have, every year, we had, I don't know, some of y'all, some of y'all remember, some of y'all don't, the parental involvement policy. You have to sign off on it. You're supposed to meet with the parents in September and go through the everything. See, I don't know if this, I think title one is still here. And for the title one money, you had a parental involvement that, that's got money set aside for the parents to do. We used to go on like conferences and stuff like that, but we did that is so long, I don't even remember if anybody remembers. But I do, because I, you know, I was like, wow, we need to bring back the parent advisory council. And we also need to, we're supposed to go through this policy in September to see if we need to add money or take money out. I know one time it was when April Sanders, she used to pay her salary. But it's supposed to be signed off on October, well, next month of every year. So I need to know, well, I'm asking now, for like, since Dr. Low left, I don't think we have, we have done this. So I need to know when are we going to start back doing it? And who in the past, well, I guess the past, what, eight or nine years, has it been going through with parents? And if it has, what parent has signed off on it? And how are you getting information out to the parents? Because my daughter now is, this is my second go round, because my son, I've been doing this for 25 years, so my oldest son, he'll be 30 in October. My daughter is 17, she's a senior high school. And I found out we have a committee, a community meeting with the superintendent, with, excuse me, the acting superintendent, Dr. Adams, Mr. Adams, I don't know what you, shoot about your title, but I want to give you the proper respect. So I know they say you're supposed to go on the school website to find this stuff out. Well, I have my email come straight to my phone. I don't even go on there sometimes. So I definitely just not want the parents to just not go on the website looking for information. I think it need to be sent home, do an all call. We have a communication person here that's making a good salary, so I think it should be an all call to the parents about this meeting. But in the past, what was done was for every event that went on in the district, and from every school, from the sports to the PTO meeting or Halloween party, whatever, it was a school, it was a calendar, and it was kept on the calendar, came home from the parents. So I think maybe if you start doing that again, then the parents will be aware of stuff like that. Thank you. I'll be back.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments?
All right, so I have a random question with, I'm just, being that school is like fully in effect at the high school, and you have the seven, you can't hear me? Oh. And, well, my name is Catherine Miller, and I have a few kids at the high school. Oh, I don't want to tell my address. It's public, right? I'd rather not. But my question is, being that all the kids are back in school full-time, how are you making out with the seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, and 11th, 12th grade in the high school? And then I have another question as to, I know you say no food from the outside to come into the schools, but you have some kids that have allergies. So why them kids can't bring their own lunch if they
Is that all the questions you have? Those two questions?
Mm-hmm.
With respect to the lunch and food, that's a safety hazard there. And so we definitely have to make sure that students aren't not only bringing in food, but that's the reason why we try to prevent students from bringing in food, even when students coming in in the morning. We try to let them eat their, eat their stuff before they enter the building. So as far as students having allergies and bringing outside food, that's not something that we have permitted, at least since I've been here. That's the reason why we keep students in and we provide them with a balanced lunch.
Well, I know that, I have one that will be, she's in sixth grade now, so if she stays in Asbury, she'll be going to the high school, but she's in seventh, and she has a lot of food allergies. So like now, she takes her own, she's been taking her own lunch since she's been like even in Bradley School.
So maybe I'm misunderstanding. If she's bringing in, packing her lunch and bringing her own lunch?
Yeah.
That is different than, let's say, you going to Kentucky Fried Chicken or?
No, I don't mean like outside food. I mean like, well, I'm confused at that part. So can they bring like their own packed lunch, not like outside food?
Yes, if you as a parent want to prepare a lunch for your child, and you put it in, you know, you send it with your child, your child is, you know, able to eat that if your child has food allergies, there is nothing, there's no policy against that.
I just wanted to be clear.
Also, ma'am, we do have to make sure like peanut allergies and stuff like that. So all of our food, we don't have pork in our products or anything like that. So our school nurse also works with Sodexo to make sure that any food that we serve students is allergy sensitive. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, are there any additional questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Anything in the emails or phone calls?
Mr. Schmidt, are there any calls from the online application?
Nothing identified.
Okay, we do have three emails.
Next question about the Chromebook.
Yes, ma'am. I.
Mr. Grillo said that Chromebooks have been damaged and everything, and they want to possibly charge the parent. But like I said, when my daughter received hers, it was very aggressive, so are, are you telling me they're going to charge you?
So ma'am, to answer your question, one of the things that we have right now with our ID department, and that's one of their goals for that department, is making sure that they're tagging and doing inventory of Chromebooks. Prior to the meeting, you and I discussed with Mr. Ruiz about getting your daughter the Chromebook. So you're going to come by and see Mr. Ruiz tomorrow. We're also just going to verify that the Chromebook that you, that your daughter was provided in, that you said you've turned in in the summer, that we have it accounted for, that that Chromebook is actually operational or what have you, and then we'll move from there. So your concern has been fully understood. Mr. Ruiz will be working with you tomorrow. You'll come to central office, and he'll take, he'll support you in that effort.
Our first email is from Victor Maitland. Hello, my name is Victoria, and I have children at the Bradley School and one child at the high school. I have two issues and I need answers. Number one, my daughter tells me they don't have art class anymore, but the superintendent says we do, and now they won't be going to the art room or class ever again. Which is it? Number two, my son is in the seventh grade at the high school. He and his friends tell me that their classes are so crowded that sometimes they don't even have a chair or a desk, and kids are standing. And why are they hanging out in class with seniors in the library most of the day? If there wasn't enough room at the high school, why did you bring the middle schoolers over there? How do you plan on taking control of Corona when it's so packed? We have a second email from Ms. Allison Hoffman, special ed teacher. Dear Madam Board President, are you aware that several special education students are not getting their required educational services as per their IEP? Students are placed in the wrong classes and/or missing core content classes. We are completely out of compliance with state special education laws. When will this situation be corrected? And our final, I'm sorry.
Madam President, being that as a staff member and responding to that staff member would be providing public commentary on someone that has not been advised, I will, I would advise that. The question has been noted, and we will, and have been dealing with that.
The, uh, final email is from Christine Hayes Schneider. Dear Madam Board President, the scheduling mess that has transpired since the start of school has only gotten worse. And I'll make it clear that the school counselors are working very hard and I am very grateful for the assistance that they have given. Nobody is blaming them for this situation. In fact, the acting superintendent's community forum, he stated that we were only nine in day nine and that kindergarten children have not even gotten to day 100. We're in day 11 and the schedules are still a debacle. This is unacceptable to even make the kindergarten analogy is an insult. Special education students have had five to six different schedule changes in the short time they have been, uh, back in-person learning. My students are frustrated and just want to have a consistent schedule. I am frustrated for them. When can we have this corrected? Why wasn't this completed prior to the school year beginning? Christine Hayes Schneider, special ed teacher.
I will give the same advice to that staff member and we are not out of compliance.
There are no additional emails?
Just for the record, the acting superintendent will respond to the emails off-record. Okay, um, at this time, the public participation portion of our meeting is closed. Um, and I'm gonna be asking for a review of the agenda items. Um, Dr. Adams?
Are there any questions on B1 through? B10? Any questions on B1 through B10?
I was in the minutes. I have to scroll like several pages. I'm right there.
Mrs. Alarca?
If we can just have a, kind of a brief background on, uh, the after-school program. I saw a number of items there, um, our 21st Century Grant, not renewed, but we will have the after-school, uh, STEAM program. Um, and just, just a brief recap of how things will be changing with, with our after-school program.
Thank you for that question. Um, as you know, community, uh, we did not receive the 21st Century Grant renewal. We have had it for the last five years. As a result of us not receiving the, uh, 21st Century Grant, which was for $500,000 per year, uh, we as a district have, um, devised a way to take and utilize some of our ESA funds with district funds in order to continue to provide the wraparound program services that this community has been accustomed to. So with the work of Mr. Ruiz, the, um, director of CNI, as well as Mr. Hastings, the BA, um, as well as our supervisors of CNI, um, came up with a program and a plan that was very consistent with what we had been providing with minor revisions in terms of the time structure. But the services, uh, will be remaining the same. So if you see in terms of, uh, B4, uh, the site coordinators and the positions, they themselves still provide the same wraparound services, uh, for our students that we have been providing the last five years. The plan is, over the next few years, is to scale, um, the percentage of the ESA funds with district funds to eventually be able to provide this program and support this program wholly on district funds by, uh, that we once utilized, uh, grant funds for.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Mr. Hastings?
Thank you, Madam President.
Can I go back to the, with a couple more questions? Our Road, Road Forward Plan, will, will we be posting that on, on our website?
Yes. This evening it has to be board approved prior to us, uh, posting it. Once the board approves it, it will be posted under the tag on our district webpage, COVID Resources.
And one final, one is, uh, in the area personnel, so before Mr. White skips on me. Will you go into executive session? Okay, thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Well, Mr. Hastings?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd be happy to take any questions. Uh, C1, uh, number one through C5, number nine. But I'd like to point out on C2, number five, which is the adoption of the new collective bargaining agreement with the Administrators and Supervisors Association that Mr. Alarca mentioned during his committee report. And also item six, which is the competitive contracting approval for a new energy services company so that we can continue to move forward with our energy savings projects. And then I'd just like to highlight the donations, uh, number four on C1, goes at the C2. We have, uh, One Joel Road Foundation, uh, donating a check for $1,000 towards a scholarship. We have the VNA of New Jersey Community Health Center, uh, providing meals that were, uh, to be distributed during our vaccination event. We have Monmouth County Democrats donating approximately $1,200 of various school supplies. And then we also have United Way of Monmouth and Ocean Counties, uh, donating various PPE supplies for both Bradley and Fairmont Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Are there any questions or comments at this time? Whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act will allow for the exclusion from discussion at the public portion of a meeting of certain matters as outlined below. And whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education wishes to discuss such matters, made and will make such discussions public when a proper conclusion has been reached, now therefore be resolved that the September 23, 2021, Asbury Park New, Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purpose as outlined and described below, upon return, action may be taken.
Yes, tonight's, um, executive session, uh, the board will, uh, receive attorney-client advice. We'll also discuss personnel matters and we will also discuss, uh, facility security matters as well. The, um, minutes from the executive session meeting will be, uh, published and the, the, um, items discussed will also be published once the need for confidentiality for those items no longer exists. It's anticipated that the board will be in executive session for approximately 15 minutes or so, uh, after which time the board will return to this, this room and, uh, the board will then have its regular board meeting. Um, so thank you very much and we will return. Uh, no formal action will be taken in executive session.
Do we need a motion?
Need a motion and a second.
Altean?
Hi.
Let's go. Roll call please, Mr. Hastings?
No, he hasn't done, he doesn't have to do.
Roll call?
No.
Okay. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10-4-6, PL 1975, C231 S1 amended 2006, C7 S2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the new poster on January 8, 2021 via email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the administration building bulletin board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January 8, 2021. The Asbury Park School System, School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skill and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Roll call please, Mr. Hastings.
So Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Breach? Ms. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Grillo?
Here.
Mr. Alarca?
Here.
Mr. Remy? Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Ms. Lozinski?
Here.
Ms. Etienne?
Here. Mary, please stand for the flag. Opening to the public participation part of this, uh, do we have any presentations?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay, we'll go to that first.
Good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen of board and community. This evening, um, the Department of Curriculum Instruction led by Mr. Edward Ruiz and the curriculum and instruction supervisors will be presenting the Advanced Education Program, which is, will be our district gifted and talented program from grades three through six, uh, which will lead into our seven and eight Dream Scholar Program, which will support our Dream Academy Program, which is nine through 12. So with that being said, um, I'd like to introduce our supervisors as well as, uh, Mr. Ruiz. So, ladies? So this evening we have with us Dr. Lauren Jackson, Ms. Janice Kropowski, Dr. Sandra Minuskin, our newest supervisor, Ms. Charlene Pinto, and one of our veteran teachers, Ms. Ed Supervisor, Ms. Kimmy Taylor.
All right. Give me a second. There we go. Good evening, uh, board members and, um, um, community. Thank you, uh, for joining us tonight here for this, uh, presentation that we're going to, uh, provide you today about our advanced education programming that we are embarking on this year in Asbury Park. Um, I wanted to introduce my team, but Dr. Adams stole my thunder a little bit. But I'm gonna say a little something about each of these people because I think it's important for you to know who they are. Uh, I'm gonna start from my, from my left to, to, to the right. Um, Dr. Sandra Minuskin, who is, uh, all, all of the supervisors you see up here are considered supervisors of curriculum instruction, but they also have specialties and I think it's important for you to know who they are. Um, Dr. Sandra Minuskin, among other many talents, is our science, uh, lead and supervisor for science and has done an amazing job this year of making sure that our sciences are represented throughout the all grade levels. Ms. Pinto, who has just joined us as part of our team, as Dr. Adam said, is working with our special services department, with our special education students. And, um, she's been an amazing addition to the team. Of course, we all know Ms. Kimmy Taylor. She is, um, a phenomenal educator who has been not only overseeing a lot of our intervention programs, but also has led, um, the charge for writing, among other things, in the district. Very appreciative of her work. Um, right next to her is Ms. Janice Kropowski, who is in charge, uh, among other things, world languages, ESL, bilingual education, the humanities, the arts, uh, any of those programs are usually involved. Ms. Janice Kropowski is along with, along with our CTE program. She's generally in charge of what goes on at the high school. And, and going back again, Ms. Kimmy Taylor is my supervisor over the, uh, upper elementary school as well. And then we have Dr. Lauren Jackson, who is in charge of our early childhood department and covers grades pre-K to two, including third grade as well, because they're all in the same building. Um, and we all work very closely together. I'm very proud of this team. And of course, Ms. Anna Graff, who is not here with us tonight, um, is also a member of our team and she focuses on mathematics. So without further ado, I'm gonna start the, um, the program for you guys. And as you can see, we've just placed a really quick program overview. Part of the reason that we wanted to go and start this program is that we've been focused so heavily on trying to bring our kids up from a deficit. And we know how important that is. Um, but I think we're at a point now where we can start looking at where do we take our students to that next level. And we have a lot of capable students. In all the years I've been here, we've always had students who required more and could do more. And so as part of this process, we decided to work on a program, as we like to call it, a gifted and talented program, called the Advanced Education Program, that's going to be implemented in grades three to 12. It's an enrichment-based program and it aims to provide students learning opportunities that focus on these three pillars here. Creating a teaching and learning environment that embraces student strengths and allows mistakes to overcome challenges, supporting teaching and learning with student background knowledge, and providing project-based challenges rooted in relevant real-life key concepts. The key for us is to allow our students, to give our students the support that they need, but also we want to support our staff members as well. I think if, in order to raise our students up, we have to raise our staff as well. All these things working together are gonna cau- cause us to have a very strong and successful program. But without further ado, I'm gonna have my supervisors kind of walk you through the rest of the program today.
Good evening, everyone. Program specifics. What does that mean? Well, what it, what it is not is repetition, working through curriculum faster, using the learner as a tutor. What it is is teacher as a coach, being creative, project-based learning, research to determine both questions and answers, which is problem-solving, and enrichment in core subjects, math, reading, science, and social studies.
So the objectives of the program basically are to provide enrichment opportunities for students in the lower grades because we know where our students are in the upper grades. We know that we have a successful Dream Academy and we know we have a successful Dream Scholar Program that feeds into the Dream Academy. So part of the objective is to provide a rigorous and relevant academic enriching experience for lower-grade students. So the program criteria really looks at many different benchmarks. Of course, we want to know what the lexile of the student, lexile level of the students are among the other bullet points that you see here. One of the important part of the Dream Academy, um, admission process is a student interview. And we wanted to make sure that those types of components that students are exposed to in later grades are included in with families and students in the younger grades to provide continuity throughout the continuum. New Jersey does not have specific standards for gifted and talented students. Uh, however, the National Association of Gifted Children does. And the New Jersey Department of Education has accepted these standards as they align with New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Um, and we drew upon the six standards found from the National Association of Gifted Children as we worked collaboratively to create the Advanced Education Program. Now, in the Dream Academy, this is freshman year. The Brookdale courses, the dual enrollment courses are highlighted in yellow. And you can see that in the first year, the freshman year, it's a very slow start as students have to make that leap from being eighth graders to now being high school-level students. That transition is very important. Fast forward to junior year, all of the Brookdale classes are highlighted in yellow. This is a dramatic transition for students from sophomore to junior year. In the summer of sophomore year, students are to pass the Accuplacer math and ELA test in order to continue along in this path. So the Dream Scholars are designed to prepare students for the highlighted yellow portion that you just saw. And we do that in several ways. We begin community collaborations that are significant in the areas of civics, in global studies, uh, in social justice areas through project-based learning.
Okay, three to six Advanced Education Program. I just want to say I'm in constant collaboration with Dr. Jackson because she oversees grade three, and they will be participating as well. But I want to bring your attention to this schedule. As you can see, periods five and six are dedicated to two blocks. This is one of Dr. Adams' criteria, so the students who are in the program can have more enrichment and intervention during the day.
So, following along with a similar path, as you can see, and you're going to get a little more details as we flow through these slides, but here's a sample of what we're looking at. As you can see on top, you see basic, you see core, you see advanced, kind of going through the continuum of how do we take a concept or a standard and take it from its baseline, core, and then even more advanced. One of the skills that we're really focused on is number sense. We talk about it all the time because our students, in order to be able to do mathematical concepts that are more complicated, they have to have a true sense of number sense. I should be able to go like this, and they should know that's five. They shouldn't have to count their fingers. That's number sense. That's on the most basic level. A kid, student should be able to know that if I do this, that's the number five. That's part of number sense. So this kind of takes you to the continuum. The way it's broken up here is third grade goes across, fourth grade, and then fifth grade. So it just kind of gives you an example. I don't, I don't need you guys to read all of that, but it gives you an idea.
As you know, we started a brand-new science program this year, and the program's HMH, and we have been, this, this slide shows the differentiation and what we're specializing in, in the advanced core and the basic areas. In the program this year, we plan to infuse more mathematics in the concepts so that it helps with the mathematics, the building of the mathematics this year. Can we have the next slide? And in this next slide, you see we're in dark bold. The, the program offers more resources in advance. The bold is what they, they offer in each area.
So as a team, we want to offer an equal opportunity for all of our students to participate in the Advanced Education Program. That includes our students classified for special education and related services. Over the next three years, a percentage of classified students, grades K to 12, exposed to grade-level curriculum in a general education setting will increase by 30%. So our yearly targeted goal is 10% increase, and what that means is providing our classified students with access to a gen ed curriculum. The steps we're taking as a team to ensure this is accomplished is professional development for our child study team members, special education staff. IEP placement decisions will be closely monitored, and academic data will be used to closely monitor instructional effectiveness. So we're using assessment data to drive curriculum and instruction.
We've walked you through the concepts for instructional components in the classroom for all grades, starting at grade nine through 12 with the Dream Academy, going to seven and eight with Dream Scholars, and then, of course, the three to six Advanced Education Program. But how, as a collective unit, as an organization, are we going to evaluate the program to ensure its efficacy, fidelity, and effectiveness with and for our students? As Ms. Kropowski said in a previous slide, we are going to continually compare analysis of district benchmark data, think HMH testing, Lincoln testing, et cetera. Additionally, we are going to infuse our district report cards. As everyone is aware, we are continuously in the process of reworking report cards to be standards-based. We are going to continuously create student portfolios to ensure that PBL component that we've all spoken to in the previous slides, and that students are getting rigorous and relevant content instruction in the AE program. Additionally, we have also included student, teacher, and family surveys and feedback from that to take that more qualitative piece from the stakeholders themselves to really evaluate how the program is doing, where it is, and where we need to go in the future. And lastly, program walkthroughs through our leadership walkthroughs with Dr. Adams and continual program walkthroughs through the Office of Curriculum and Instruction. Sustainability. We've evaluated it, we've implemented it, but how are we going to ensure its long-term effectiveness and existence in the school district? It will be supported through eventually, not right away as we are just rolling this out, but long-term goal action steps, a student mentoring program, the continual infusion and reinforcement of our social-emotional concepts that are reinforced through the Office of Student Services, family focus groups, taking that data from those interviews and survey feedback and really honing in on what our family, students, and community members are saying about the program itself, targeted professional learning opportunities for staff involved with the AE program, and of course, consistent updates, adjustments, and revisions to our curriculum, whether as an internal decision or as put through from the New Jersey Department of Education. And with that, do you have any questions for us?
So before we take any questions, I just want to add, and I appreciate, I just want to thank this, this amazing group of educators that we have standing in front of us who worked really hard on this, but more importantly, have implemented this. This is not, we're not showing this to you to tell you what we're going to do. We put this up there to tell you what we're already doing. I want to say a special thank you to Dr. Adams for really putting us in a position to be able to do this. It's his vision, his leadership that's really helped us hone this down and make this what it is. And I really want to say thank you to him, and I just appreciate his leadership and his guidance on this. And with that, we're ready. If you guys have any questions for us, we're, we're here. Yes, Mr. Lataroca?
If, if I can just confirm that, uh, grades three to six, there would be two of the periods for those that are in gifted, talented, each day, that will address gifted and talented methodologies as you presented. Is that, is that correct?
That's part of it. So it's, it's a part of a whole. So we've identified the students. We've told, we've already spoken to the teachers as well, which students, which cohort of students have are gift, are our AE students. Those students, when they go to math, will have a more rigorous math class. When they go to language arts, they'll have a more rigorous language arts class. And it's, and when they go to enrichment, most students usually in that block will go into intervention. Those students will go to an intervention period that's really more focused on enriching as opposed to trying to mitigate some deficiencies. We're actually looking to push them during that, that period, that block.
So as a practical matter, are, are they, for, for not the two intervention periods, are they being grouped separately for a higher-level math, for a higher?
That's correct.
Okay. And then just my other question was, I'm a little vague with regard to grades seven and eight, I see as critical grades in preparation for the Dream Academy, and how the gifted and talented methodology plays into certain curricular issues that have to be addressed in seven and eight in preparation for the academy?
Sure. And now, one of those critical issues definitely is algebra. Algebra, we believe, and, and we know, needs to be taught in eighth grade in order for those principles to be practiced and understood by the students in the upper grades when it comes time to not just Accuplacer testing, but really SAT testing or any other examination that the students need to, to complete. So algebra is a key to the Dream Scholar Program.
So, so that would perhaps take precedence over some other gifted and talented methodologies at those two grade levels? I'm just not sure how it's all meshing together at seven and eight.
So what we did when we devised the AE program was, we looked at the end goal, and we started to work backwards. So we know the end goal is the associate's degree in the high school diploma. And how do we get there? And at each grade level, what do we need to do to ensure that the students build upon? So we worked in backward design, actually, to make sure that students had a rigorous ELA option and component in grade seven and eight, as well as in mathematics, because those are the two really tested core, and how science can support the math, and how social studies, civics, then can support ELA. We took a critical look at how those two disciplines could support the core in those grade levels through a backward design. I'm not sure if I answered your question.
I think the key piece is that the academies drove this, drove this discussion, right? We were looking at how do we make sure our students coming up, going into those academies, are prepared? The Accuplacer, which is a big, big test that our students have to take when they go to Brookdale, has been a challenge for us. And part of that challenge has been not being able to do algebra in eighth grade. They need those concepts. They need to know how to do those things. That's why I went back to number sense earlier. We need to get those basic concepts back, push our students so that when they come up and they go into the academies, they are prepared. And we can, they can take those courses sooner and finish sooner. That's another thing. We, we end up doing a lot of remediation. And so we want to be able to have our students come, enjoy the, the process of learning, being on a college campus, and having success. And you only do that if you prepare them from the beginning. So we got it, so that's where, that's the aim. That was the, the focus started from the top. We looked at the top, and we said, let's work our way down and make sure that we have all the supports in place so that our students, when they get to that point, they're ready to rock and roll.
I, I don't, well, I do have a question. I am happy that you guys are addressing the Accuplacer concerns, because that was even my concerns with, with students that were going to four-year schools. Like, some of our top students were failing the placement test and having to take the remedial courses in college. So I'm glad that we're, we're addressing that now. Additionally, are there opportunities for students that are not, are not identified at the beginning of the school year and be, and do well, you know, maybe first and second semester to now be pushed up into the, to that program to, on the different grade levels?
Yes, there is. I'll, I'll let Janice touch on it, but you know, we also have other opportunities for students for college credit. So I'll let her kind of talk a little bit more about that, but yes, there will be other opportunities.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know, how I see it in my mind is there's fluidity in the program, and that we all know every student learns differently. We all know all of our students are talented in some way. So to make sure that the special education student population, as well as the ELL population, are all represented and given an opportunity to make their way in or out of the program, depending on, you know, their achievement.
Thank you.
I just, if I may, I just wanted to say that I'm very pleased that you're working to at the lower grades, so that those children that, you know, just need a little extra to keep them involved in, you know, their studies and move forward, that's going to change the trajectory of our curriculum if things start moving up in that direction. By the time high school, high school's a little different for them.
Hi. I have a few questions. First, do we have an idea of the number of students that's going to be in the first cohort of, of advanced ed?
Yeah. We don't have the number of third grade, think of a third grade class of about 15 to 20 students in each building. So we're talking about two buildings?
Yeah.
Third grade class of 15 to 20 students.
Yeah. Okay.
Right. Because of the pandemic, the pa, the data wasn't as, 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 as rich as we would have liked.
Sure.
We're going to work through it with the students that we have.
No, that's great. The other question had to do, so I, I saw the Dream Academy, the students learn Mandarin Chinese. It's fantastic.
Yeah.
What world languages? But then I saw throughout the rest, what are the world languages that, that Advanced Ed could be able to, to take? I mean, I know we have Spanish and French. Is it just a continuation or enrichment on, on Spanish and French?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then I also saw that, so you, you want a, a specific percentage of the special education students, 30%, to be kind of put into general education? Are there specific subjects that, that are, would, that they would get kind of put into that would make it an easier transition? And what other supports are there for them if we see that it's not, maybe not working out?
So for them to access a general education curriculum, that can look like many different ways. So pull-out resource is what we offer when we take a student out of the classroom and offer supplemental instruction. So our goal is to not offer a replacement instruction, just a supplemental, so they're able to sit for their regular education, general education instruction of the day with their peers, and then be pulled out for supplemental instruction to kind of catch them up on that gap that they've missed out on. So they still will continue to have the support of a special education teacher and a general education teacher.
Right.
Sometimes also a parent support. So we're not looking to move our students just into a general education setting without the support. What we want to do is make sure they have access to the gen ed curriculum with supplemental help.
That's great. And I saw that you have the Amistad curriculum in there, which is something that a few people have come by the past couple of months to, to discuss with you, Edwin. So that's great to see. And then with science, this is the kind of a cool thing, is what I noticed over there with your curriculum is, it's kind of what has been mandated by the, by the state and by the, the Murphy Administration in terms of, I don't know if everybody knows, but New Jersey is the first state with which climate change education, implementing climate change education into the curriculum is mandated. And I'm wondering if that's part of it, or is, and has there been thought of that implementation in the other subjects too?
Yeah. We've had to redo our curriculum, K to 12, and we're continuing to, as you, as you know, and improve it, have to infuse the climate change requirement. So yes, the answer is yes.
And that starts as early as, as?
As K.
As K. Okay, right.
K to 12.
Sweet. Okay.
To, if I might add, today, Dr. Jack from Princeton Hydro was able to come and meet with, at the Engineering III students regarding the Wesley deal on Sunset Lake projects, which was a tremendously rich presentation, and the students were riveted for the entire 45-minute presentation. So not necessarily climate change, but environmental justice nonetheless. So it is infused in, in engineering.
Sweet. That's great. Great to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Thank you, team.
Dr. Adams, do you have a presentation?
That concludes my presentation, ma'am.
Now, we're to the public participation part of our meeting. Please come to the podium, announce your name, your address, and you have three minutes for your comment and/or question.
Sheila, 120 Jefferson Street. I told you I'd be back.
Ma'am, your microphone is not on.
Ms. Brazil. You copy to the mic? Oh, no, I can't hear you. I can't hear you, Sheila.
Hold on. My kid is probably hearing me, don't let me talk. It's, it's not me, it's him.
Not me, it's the mic.
Sheila Brazil, 120 Jefferson Street, Asbury Park. I told you I'd be back. That was a good presentation by Talented, Gifted, but they said we had that years ago when my son was over here, which he would be 30 in October, and, but he took algebra at the middle school way back in 2000 and something. So I don't know why, because he didn't take, I think, calculus his last year at the high school. So that's good to hear that back, but should be offered to, you know, all students, I think, because they do need their math and stuff. And then, speaking of the Talented, Gifted, are y'all going to bring back the curriculum, back to the curriculum? Because it was taken out. My daughter is 17 years old. She did not learn how to write curses when she was in third grade. I had to go out and buy her a little tablet to have the person writing on it. So I think that need to come back to the curriculum for kids to learn. Because the, the excuse was that people doing stuff on the computer these days, well, they cannot sign a check. When they get paid, you need a signature on the check. It's not valid endorsed, until you have to endorse it. It's not valid. That's so, you bring the curriculum back in. Another thing about the food, that was my first question I had, but I did. Because my- Um, because my daughter, I was under the impression, and my daughter also under the impression that she cannot bring her own food from her, from home into the school. So you need a sense of clarification up to each school about that, because she's at the high school. So, because from my understanding, kids do not want to eat lunch at the high school now because a student found, uh, wrote in his chicken sandwich. So a lot of kids not eating lunch. So my daughter called me, she said she's starving. If I gotta go pull her out of school every day, I would do that and make sure my child have some food to eat. If she can't bring her own food in there, not from Dunkin' Donuts or some food I cook at home. I cook almost every day. And then, um, do we have a supervisor of guidance? Two guidance counselors left the high school last year. And, uh, my daughter was in the engineering program, but I guess this has been her third engineering three. I guess she got kicked out or something. Well, not kicked out, but she passed class, but they put her in band. She's a cheerleader. She cannot cheer and play in the band at the same time. She's never been in band. Maybe when she was in the middle school. So I think if we have a supervisor of guidance, they need to get on top of it. A lot of people, kids are not getting their, um, the ties they need, credits they need to graduate from school. They put them in a, she said at last, from two oh six to three thirty-three, she have, um, planning, literacy, planning or something. She's sitting in the library for an hour, over an hour, doing nothing. So she don't, they don't get credit for the class. So I think that needs to be looked in. I don't know, like I said, back in younger years, when I was in the school, because I got to Ask Me from eighty-two, we had a director supervisor of guidance. And we also had one when my son was in school.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil.
They need to look into that. Thank you so much. Helpless and God.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sean Hamilton. I live at eighty-four Creek Road in Keansburg. Um, I am a, uh, classroom teacher here for twenty-two years. I'm standing here today as a majority member, majority representative of the Ashby Park Education Association, who have been involved for twenty-two years and I'm currently treasurer. Um, Madam Board President, Policy Board, Board Policy forty-two eighty-two is one of the many policies all staff was adhered to. This specific policy is in regard to social media, you know, the do's and don'ts. Um, if you don't have copies, I, I have two copies. Sorry, my printer is fifty bucks a cartridge for ink. So, um, I'll put them over here if you don't have them there. Please take note of numbers one through nine. I utilize social media and I'm very careful about what I post in public. Recently, our acting superintendent made a tweet that basically called out a blogger who had been writing disparaging articles about the school district. I'm sure you've all seen him. Dr. Adams sent out a tweet with white clown faces making accusations of racism toward the staff. I find this insulting and inappropriate and most importantly, conduct unbecoming. Will the board take any action? Because we as staff are held accountable for our social media posts and so should the acting superintendent. Please be mindful that this was posted on the public district website, which makes it even more disturbing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Rogers, Soul Avenue. I want to address a couple of things. Uh, one was uh, a scheduling issue. Uh, that was brought up on a, uh, community meeting. And, you know, I don't want to give my, my background and history. I came from corporate entity management for fifteen years. Uh, we've done scheduling. Uh, when you do
Mr. Rogers, could you speak up just a little bit so we can hear you?
When we've done scheduling, uh, we have software bases that know how to input, amount of number of classes and students. I know most schools go through this. And I'm understanding there's a big basis on scheduling. Uh, or issue with scheduling because of overcrowding. I don't know why this isn't being addressed as quickly as possible. Uh, number two, a lot of questions got answered, asked today that are questions that should be addressed to many of the parents that can't be here on a regular basis. One was the, uh, issue that Joe Grillo brought up was these computers, uh, how, what's the maintenance issues, how to deal with it. I mean, we got it, we have to have counseling issue on the internet. Someone does this, we can do that. We can put out more information. Uh, so we have a lot of ways of getting information out that parents don't get. Number two, I know New Jersey Education did a learning loss analysis. What was that report? And we're going into this Talented and Gifted. Where are we standing with the learning loss that was done and how are we preparing these kids for this next step into the things that we want to do? Because we already know we're, we're way behind. Uh, my last issue, uh, and I'm very upset. Uh, I'm, I'm supporting a, a, a great project in Newark called Newark Kids Code. And right now, we have, uh, three D printers, we have laptops, we're working with Bloomfield College and NJIT to help our students. And this is a project I would like to bring down here. And our kids have to be challenged. This is the new up and coming age. We, we have a kid that is supporting this program from Livingston, fifteen years old, who's also helping us out, who's coding, who's teaching these issues. Our kids have a lot of, 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 of learning to do. We have a big community that wants to support. We want to have transparency and open comments on everything. And the other thing, the question that was brought up, if a teacher sends in a question, is, are they going to be rice? I thought the question is what we're trying to address, if they're having issues, not whether we have to bring them in, but to answer the question, we need to be working together to get our kids to where we need to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Bedillo. I live at nineteen Assateague Road in Howell. At Thurgood Marshall, where I currently teach first grade, I'm curious to know why there are seven preschool classes with only three to six children in each class? Wouldn't it be wise in order to enhance our children's academic and social performance to have lower class sizes in grades K to three? Also, why is it that each kindergarten class no longer has their own paraprofessional? They are now sharing a paraprofessional amongst three classes. As a former kindergarten teacher of eighteen years, my students relied heavily on the paraprofessional in order to enhance and reinforce their academic and social skills. I hope for the benefit of the children that you will reconsider full-time paras in each kindergarten class as well as addressing the inequality of class sizes amongst the different grade levels.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Kelly. I live at thirty-eight Diane Drive in Brick, New Jersey. Um, Madam Board President, I'm just, are you aware that you voted on twenty-seven transfers a week and a half before school started? Um, where staff were moved in positions, they had no training in whatsoever. Hours changed, that might have affected because of different schools have different hours. The hours affected childcare or their livelihoods. Um, it also, um, caused disarray. Um, would you find that acceptable for the children, the teachers? Um, when every district, other district around New Jersey gets their assignment, usually in June before we leave school? Um, we need to learn our craft. A lot of teachers aren't trained in the, uh, classes and curriculum they're in now. Um, it's no wonder we don't effectively learn our craft because we get changed so many times. Um, just wondering if you know that's educationally sound for the students and staff? Um, I'm just saying this would probably never happen in many other districts that we get changed so many times in transfers. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Johnson. I live at thirty-three Peachtree Road in Oakhurst. Um, my concern is lack of substitutes, like I'm raspy now. Last week I had no voice and I teach kindergarten. I didn't want to call out because I did not want my class of eighteen to be split amongst my colleagues the first week of school. We did it, we made it through. But it's so hard to like, think about your family, think about things that you have, might have to do that come along and not want to leave your babies in the school with somebody else having to switch classes, which is not great for COVID resources, reasons either. And just, uh, if there's anything that, you know, we're trying to do, I've seen posts about trying to get substitutes. And if we have anything going on with that, because it's kind of, you know, you don't really want to take off because you don't want to leave your kids. But sometimes you have to. So I'm just hoping that there'll be some sort of resolution to that. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any more public parties?
Good evening. My name is Michael Zajak. I live at three Brookside Street, Farmingdale, New Jersey. I just have a couple of quick questions. Uh, Madam Board President, the board has a policy that relates to media consent forms. Uh, in the past few weeks, many of my colleagues have told me there have been multiple tweets and posts with students. We were not even into the first week of school. No media consent form, forums were turned in, et cetera. Yet there are pictures all over social media. How can this possibly be allowed when the students have not turned their forums in?
Are there any additional comments or questions? Mr. Hastings, are there any emails?
Yeah, Sheila. Uh, sorry, I know I've been here one time, but can I say something about the parent consent thing? Because I do have a daughter at the high school. We didn't know if we see them. I didn't get one. I've been my address since nineteen eighty-four. So there's no mail coming home to the parents from anybody. I had to go to the school in order to get her a pop card from sophomore junior year. So there's no mail coming home to the parents. So instead of putting stuff on the internet, maybe need, post stuff has been around for years and years and years. And it does work. Like email every day, but not from, from the district. There's, it's some, something that I really don't want, but
Thank you.
Send things, it's not come home.
We have no additional emails, Mr. Schmidt. And we have no calls.
Okay, public participation is now closed. Madam State Monitor, do you have a report?
I'd just like to, um, report to the board that, uh, we invited the county superintendent, Dr. Richens, uh, into the district last Friday, uh, to discuss with him, uh, the distribution and goals that will be associated for the district, uh, with the ESAR fund monies that are available and have been, have been assigned to the district. One of the most obvious questions, uh, becomes immediately whether any of those funds can be used for the, uh, plans that we have talked about as a board, uh, for Obama and the Obama School. Um, it is his opinion, and he indicated that we could use his name. Um, first of all, let, let me clarify what the ESAR funds have actually have to be used for. Uh, these are the three bills, ESAR one, two, and three, that originated, uh, in Congress and that were distributed to the states. And states in turn made their, uh, formulas available to both school districts. Each one of those bills, uh, has with it a description of what that money can be used for and, uh, conversely, what it can be used for actually. It must be used for COVID-related activities or improvements as that pertains to students. In other words, the central office or an office area would not be eligible at all for any of those funds because they obviously, uh, are not, um, they do not include student programs or student, uh, attendance. As a result of that, it became clear in talking to Dr. Richens that, um, anything that is done to, uh, Obama has to be done through private financing, as we've talked before. Or there would have to be some program, student program design that would make the Obama School eligible in some of those funds. Now, I would see, obviously, what basically, what that basically means is that if you were going to take one of the floors and assign it to the restoration or improvement and then move central office to that location, if you were to go in the building and replace the heating, air filtering system, you wouldn't just replace one floor, you'd replace the system. And the floor that you're on would benefit from that. But again, you have to go back to whether or not that building is housing a student program that would make it eligible and be really, uh, that would make it classifiable under the, the student, uh, COVID regulations. Um, he expressed some of the same concerns. He was here the first time Obama, uh, school was closed. And he is still concerned as, uh, Mrs. Anderson expressed, I think, day one, that we don't know what we're getting into when we start to tear it apart, which makes the actual amount, uh, that you want to dedicate or borrow, um, sort of in the air. Because it, obviously, if you borrow the money and begin the reconstruction of that building, uh, you run into additional problems. For instance, that's criticism. Uh, you dedicate your funding that you've applied for and have to address the asbestos issues. Otherwise, then you don't have the rest of the money to, to go through with what you originally wanted to have happen. Um, the board has a very difficult question here. And I'm, I'm not sure, you know, that there is a clear answer. Uh, for those in the audience that aren't certain of exactly what I'm talking about is whether you look for, um, another way of addressing and moving central office so that you are in a building that you own and no longer have to pay rent. Or, um, whether you renovate Obama, which is a very old building and is going to take a great deal of renovation, uh, to meet the state codes that will be required. Um, and he was not able to tell us basically, one way or the other, whether the state would give us, uh, approval to go down that, you know, that road and start the renovation. Or whether we stay where we basically are, uh, which is in a rental situation, wherever we are, uh, in rent. And you really got to sit down quite a lot of dollars because the estimates that we have gotten so far, one floor renovation is close to two and a half million dollars, which if you keep your central office where it is, would be about the same amount of money as if you were to, uh, uh, stay there for another eight to ten years. And at the end of that And at the end of that eight or 10 years, you use that $2.5 million that you would have put into Obama and you still don't have a place to go. So it's a pretty difficult decision. Um, he, the end result, his visitation, was that he is going to help us try to get someone because Mr. Hastings says we're at the summer to try, with different people, to try and get somebody that will put their signature or even verbally say to us, yes, this is what Trent will approve and this is what they will not approve. So we've been playing a game of avoidance. Uh, the staff at Trent is not, uh, has not been working full force all summer. Uh, the projects that are on their desk right now probably would fill this room as far as schools renovating and changing, eating your filtering systems and electrical systems and technology programs. Uh, so how fast we will move it ahead once we get a direction to go in is another question. But he is going to assist us in attempting to, uh, to get somebody with some authority that would be willing, you know, to put this on the line. I reported this out tonight to the board because I did not want the board to think, we all have our own opinions on this. I think you're not lying. I don't have dog in the spite. Uh, this is really the decision that the board has to make. However, it's not an easy decision because it involves a lot of money and you're putting your name to proposing whatever program and direction you go in. And we want to make sure that it's right. And I know that the board members and other members on the staff say to me, why are you going to do something? Why does the board let us, the district, go to move on that? It's not, as he said, it's not an easy decision because it's a building that, uh, you have to step back and ask yourself, is it a building that we want to take offline? Meaning we'll never use it again for students? Or is it a building that can be renovated? It is over 100 years old. Um, you know the kind of materials over those years that were used in the building that presented problems. Even if you had your own home in that situation, you would be looking at the same item of cost and hidden costs that we are really in question about. So we are working on, if the board wants to appoint a special committee uh, to work with volunteering Mr. Hastings or Dr. Adams or myself, whoever you would like to be on the committee to explore all of these things. Um, but we just, I know this can be patient once again, but until Dr. Richens is back to us with somebody from Trent who can come down from the school authority and say, this is what you can or can't do, uh, we are very hesitant in starting to spend funds and move ahead. And that's the reason, because it's just not clear. It's not like, you know, having, looking at five cracks in the sign book and say, well, now we're going to fix those five cracks. This is a massive, um, renovation. It can be just picking up the desk and moving it over there. Nobody allows that anymore. Um, you know, everything has to be handicapped accessible. It has to be done in the acceptable, approved state way. And I understand the concerns that the board has that in order to buy something else, you're going in another direction and you're adding another building to online which you know, want to do. And I get that, I understand that. But, uh, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them for Mr. Hastings or Dr. Adams, and they were at the meeting as well with Dr. Richens.
Madam State Monitor, we do have a long committee.
Are they?
We do have a meeting.
Okay, well, I don't know if you wanted the same one or not.
We do.
Start. Anyone?
Any questions or statements? Okay. That's all our reports. Um, at this point, I'm going to be asking for acceptance, please.
Do we have a motion for A19, A8, and C?
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Siski?
Yes.
Mr. Alderman?
Yes.
Mr. Stone? Mr. Earl?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Cassin?
They're at the same.
Yep, you're at the same, you're good. Mr. Lowery?
Yeah.
Mr. Saunders?
Yeah.
And Mr. Trier?
I'm staying.
Thank you, motion pair.
Mr. Tatters, would, um, do your guys for the decision?
Madam President, I'd like to ask for consent agenda from B1 through B10.
Questions, comments?
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Lowery, B1 through B10, Mr. Siski?
Yes.
Sethian?
Uh, yes. Gas number staying on B1, B5, letter O, and B7, number 7.
Thank you. Mr. Alderman?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes. She said yes. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Yes, uh, staying on B4M, as a parent.
Mr. Alderman?
Yeah.
And Mr. Saunders?
Yeah.
Thank you, motion pair.
Mr. Casey, would I ask for a decision?
Thank you, Madam President.
The motion for A1C, number 1, through C5, number 9, for speeding C1, C and D. Mr. Siski, second, Mr. Saunders. Questions or comments?
Mr. Alderman?
Mr. Lowery? Yes.
Mr. Siski?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders here?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Earl?
Stay.
Mr. Lowery?
Oh, sorry. Now, that was staying on, um, C2, B and C, and C1.
Thank you, Mr. Lowery.
Yeah.
And Sethian?
Yes.
Motion pair, thank you.
Uh, can I get a, only motion for your...
Second.
Second. Change me. Yes?
No.
Uh, never mind.
No.
Never mind.
No.
Okay. Everybody, you're talking to us, it's all through you.
Hello.